Will the council meeting of September 26, 2025 please come to order? It is 9:02 a.m. So, good morning, everybody. And the greeting for today, if you care to use it, is something I think we all could agree to. Something that we wish could happen today and every day. And it's, in Japanese, sekai haewa. Sekai haewa. I probably mispronounced it, but it's sekai haewa. And this is what we all hope for, peace in the world. Roll call.
Chair proceeding with roll call. For members who are participating from non-public locations, please state who, if anyone except minors, are present with you as part of roll call. Councilmember Pro Tampori, Tasha Kama.
Excused.
Oh, she's right there. Sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. She's online, present. Hello, good morning.
Yeah. Aloha kakahiaka, chair. Sekai haewa to everyone in the chambers and in Akaku land. And yes, if we can just start with peace within ourselves, we'll be happier people. Thank you, chair.
Thank you.
And I am alone in my workspace.
Okay. Vice Chair Yukilei Sugimura.
Sekai haewa. Peace is so appropriate as we have Peace Day today and honor that as one of our resolutions. But good morning, everybody. Nice to see all of you. Looking forward to a productive meeting, chair.
Thank you.
Councilmember Tamara Palton.
Aloha kakahiaka and sekai haewa.
Sekai haewa. Minasan, hao gozaimasu. Gabe Johnson to mosimasu. There is no testifying at the Lanai District Office. Darimoi nai desu Lanai District Office. And I'm here and ready to work, mahal chair.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kiani Rollins Fernandez.
Aloha kakahiaka, chair. There are currently no testifiers at the Molka District Office. Happy to be here in person, mahal chair.
Thank you.
Councilmember Tom Cook.
Excused.
Councilmember Nohelani Uuhajins.
Good morning, everyone. Sekai haewa.
Councilmember Shane Senensi.
Sekai haewa and aloha kamaluhi akaku.
Thank you.
And Council Chair Alice Lee.
Sekai haewa.
Chair Quorum is present to conduct the business of the council. You have eight members present, one excused. For the record, I'm the county clerk, Moana Ludi, and seated next to me is the deputy clerk, Rochelle Thompson. Joining us from our Legislative Staff Division is Joyce Morishige, Lawrence Aldana, Del Yoshida, and Arthur Suyama. Assisting the council with maintaining order and decorum is Council Ambassador Ryan Martin. Joining the meeting from the Office of Council Services is Director David Roth and legal analyst Carla Nakata from the Department of the Corporation Council's First Deputy Mimi De Jourdan.
Opening remarks will be presented by Councilmember Nohelani Uuhajins.
Thank you, chair. Good morning, everyone. Typically, I usually write something down, but today, I'm just gonna talk to you folks, so please forgive me if it's slightly discombobulated. Originally, I was gonna talk about duality in life and how, in my world, in my childhood, I guess, I had two different, very similar life experiences, all in one week, all the time, where I would go from Kahului Jodo Mission to Hawaiian Paya Protestant Church. And both of those realities were very much true. And so, my conversation originally was going to be how two very different truths are still nonetheless very true. And then Tuesday happened, and then now that was scrapped. So now I'm gonna talk to you guys about the Paya fire, which I just read this morning was intentionally set. And so, my sadness went to anger, and now I'm just, we're just talking at this point. But it came so close to Paya school. I think it was within 150 feet. We were actually in our TIG meeting on that day. And, you know, all of our alarms are going off, and I was like, I can't even focus. I gotta go. Called my grandma, make sure she wasn't at home, told her to please come up to my house when she decides to, she was with my auntie at the time, go home. And with her, I have to call her more than once because she will forget. So, I called her to tell her, "You can't go home. Come up to my house." And then, on my drive home, I realized, oh shock, she probably forgot. Let me call her again. Which she did, and luckily, she did come up to the house. And we were talking about, you know, the origin of the fire and how it started at Holomua Road. And she was talking to me about how, growing up, she didn't go to Paya Hawaiian Protestant Church because those were for the adults. And the children's church was actually on Holomua Road, right below the high school. And it made me remember that. She made me trespass one time. And, you know, because she really did teach me how to drive on that road. And so, not too long ago, too, so long after I knew how to drive. She has this habit of, when we hang out, she'll go, "Oh, go over there. Turn over there," instead of, "Can we go drive up Holomua Road?" Or, "Can we go over here?" She'll just, right before the turn comes, she'll go, "Oh, should I go up there?" I'll like, "See." So we do. And she says, as we're driving up, "Oh, Jay, turn down here." And now, mind you, I drive a minivan, and this is a dirt road. And I'm like, "Where are we going?" She goes, "Oh, just keep driving." I'm like, "Okay, well, this is Mahi Pono land, and are we kind of trespassing right now?" She goes, "That's okay. What they gonna do to me?" I was like, "I don't know, but what they gonna do to me, grandma?" And so, we get to kind of the end of where you can drive, and there's like construction and stuff going on back there. And so, everybody is watching us drive. And I'm like, "Grandma, what are you doing?" She goes, "Oh, my childhood church is back here, and I just, I just like, see." And I was like, "Okay, whatever. Let's go." And somebody comes up to us, and he's like, "What are you guys doing?" And I was like, "Ooh, sorry." My grandma wanted to check out her church. She's like, "Okay, I'll go stay with you guys a little while, and then you gotta head out." And I was like, "Okay, that's fine." So, we can't really walk around because she's older now, but we look at the mill, we look at where her church used to be, and, you know, she reminisces. This may be Mahi Pono land now, but that was her memory lane. So, they indulge us for a bit. And anyway, we were talking about all of what Paya was when she evacuated to my house, which, by the way, that's the second time or so in the last month and a half, first being tsunami, and then, and then now the fire. And we were talking about Paya school and how my son goes to Paya school now. He's a second grader. So, the fire happened at 1:30, and evacuation started at 2:05-ish. And luckily, my son had already evacuated, as well as majority of the Paya school students. However, there are other schools around that area that don't end until 2:30. So, that was on my mind, to make sure my niece and the other children that go to the schools around Paya school are safe. And the, as I said, the fire, I think, went about 150 feet, which is quite close. And so, my son goes there now, as well as all of my four children. I went to Paya school, as well as my brothers and my two adopted brothers, and my dad and his siblings, and my grandma and her siblings, and my great-grandmother. And so, that's five generations that went to Paya school. And it's only five because Paya school was built long after my family had settled in Paya. I think this year is about the 101 year that Paya school has, the main structure has been there. So, there's probably be a Hokowano or a Palaka in that school since it was constructed. We're living legacies of that place. Where the fire did stop, though, between the school and the entrance of Holomua Road on Balden Avenue, what many may not know is that was the site of the old Paya hospital, where my grandma was born. And after the hospital, it turned into the children's foster home, the orphanage. There's a little memorial plaque right out there, and I always thought it was very, an eerie representative of the tea that grew right next to the plaque. It never died, and it never grew. It was always about this big. But it was there. It's a very good reminder of what was. And, you know, the structures are no longer there, but the footprints and the memories, they're there. So, that was burned. I told myself not to get upset. But when you see the fire is intentionally set, it takes you from sadness to anger. And I'm trying to channel that anger into making a difference. Thank you. But... I apologize. Watching Lahaina burn is something we never have to do again. And I've said that before. And I hate being this right because it could have been prevented. And we are so lucky that no structures were lost, and more importantly, no lives were lost. And I thank all that is good, that the fire happened near around when school is done. Because if we needed to evacuate an entire school with children, then yes, my child too. But nonetheless, roughly 400 children, majority of which are Kulukai Puni students. And so, their families don't live in Paya. They're not very close. An evacuation for a majority of the school would have been very difficult. And parents from all over the island would probably be panicking, and I don't blame them to pick up their students. Yes. Thank you so much to our firefighters and to Mima and to MPD. And thank you so much to the community for coming out as we painstakingly discuss the inevitable, which was on Tuesday. It was a bittersweet moment to have to plan for this event because it was inevitable. It was, as discussed in those meetings, not an if, but a when. Ironically, that meeting, that day on Tuesday, was also supposed to be Paya's budget meeting. And that was obviously canceled. But our budget priorities remain as a burning red flag to what Paya really requires. And honestly, what all of Maui and all of our small historic towns require is fire prevention and responsibility of the county to Maalama, our space. And so... I just wanted to talk to you folks about what I think Paya will need in the future, what I think Maui will need in the future to ensure that we don't have to live through this again. And I think the Paya meeting has been rescheduled, but nonetheless, the importance of what is needed in Paya is glaringly obvious. And... Phew, sorry. Luckily, I should have worn waterproof mascara. I just thank you all for your support. I know you all have been there, and I received texts and calls, and all of your concern doesn't go unnoticed. And I really appreciate each and every one of you, as well as, you're right, all the M departments that respond to the emergencies. So, thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. A reminder that we have so much more work to do. And... But this council has been pushing for fire prevention for so long. And if you remember, I even tried to promote an arson squad, which went nowhere. But hopefully now, I mean, it doesn't have to be all year round. It could be seasonal, you know, especially when drought season comes along. But there's so much for us to do, and I'm so thankful that you're okay and your family's okay and that most of the people in Paya are okay. I didn't text you that day, but I thought about you all day. And I'm sure the rest of the members did. Okay, members, a pledge of allegiance. Okay, so before we proceed with today's agenda, may I please request that everyone keep their microphones muted unless it's your turn to speak. As a reminder, testimony must pertain to items on the meeting agenda. When testifying, please direct your remarks to the council and not to any individual council member or member of the public. Each testifier will be allowed to speak for up to three minutes on each item. For individuals wishing to testify on teams, please click the Raise Your Hand button to be added to the testifier log. If you are calling in, please follow the phone prompts to be added to the testifier log. If you wish to testify anonymously, please sign in as anonymous, and you will be given a testifier number. Decorum shall be maintained at all times. Any person who behaves in a manner that disrupts, disturbs, or impedes the orderly conduct of any council meeting can, at the discretion of the presiding officer or a majority of present council members, be ejected or banned from council meetings or, if participating remotely, muted or dropped from the meeting. Examples of disruptive behavior include, but are not limited to heckling, shouting, use of profanity, threatening or slanderous remarks made to any member of the council, staff, or general public. All meeting attendees, whether online or in person, are expected to wear clothing in a manner that is respectful of others and appropriate for these proceedings. For example, attendees should wear a shirt when testifying. Ms. Clerk, please proceed.
Thank you, chair. At this time, we will be taking testimonies solely on the ceremonial resolutions that are in our agenda. Currently, we have two people signed up to testify. The first is Don Lono, to be followed by Jim Langford.
Chair, I think Ms. Lono will testify for resolutions.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Langford, if you're on to testify on ceremonial resolutions, this is your opportunity.
I'm sorry. I hit the wrong button. I was just listening. God bless you all.
Thank you. All right, if there's anyone who would like to testify on the ceremonial resolutions, this is your opportunity. If you're in chambers, you can make your way up to the podium. Otherwise, if you're online, you can raise your hand. I see Mr. Law making his way to the podium, chair. I see Mr. Law making his way to the podium, Chair.
Aloha kakahiaka, aloha kako, aloha akaku. I'm Jixi Law for Kuluuka. I, I got here late. The bus went holo-holo this morning. So I wasn't, I had, I went over the agenda as much as I could. I don't have any access to the, the agenda other than the, what's printed on the bulletin board out there. So I'm just gonna wing it like Councilmember Nohe Lani Uuhodgens did. And that's what I wanted to speak about. I just had a feeling about that. And I just want Councilmember Hodgens to know that fire cannot hurt her. And I put the, I put my powers combined with hers and I put a I don't like spell, that's not the wrong word, but you put in a mana of protection. Okay, the Hawaiian word of the day is for peace, malu. M-A-L-U with no the kind. And it's also part of malu hiya, that means peace also. So that's what, um, yeah, I was, this goes with the ceremonial resolutions. I'll go ahead and get this over with and then I'll have to come back up here. Yeah, I see a whole bunch of things. The, the agenda was really, I was really impressed with whoever put this together. Thank you Clerk's Office. So maybe just leaving them alone for a little while, let them get their work done. And it's really, I'm, I'm impressed with the county developing this skill of recognizing everything that should be, um, including with, I'm hoping the Royal House of Hawaii is gonna come in and ground us on that. And it goes with the, um, so this goes with that, um, the bird bill, the lighting bill later on. I'll just go ahead and go over that right now too, so I don't have to come back up. The birds need peace too. It's mentioned in the, um, the resolution that
But Mr. Law?
Yeah.
We're just on ceremonial resolutions.
Okay, I'll come back up then.
Okay.
This is, this has to do with peace and all, I'm trying to tie it all together. Uh, so the sign, I'm, I'm born under the sign of the Cancer Crab, which is July, so that's, oh, see, you messed me up now. I was, I was going along pretty good there, but now we're gonna, this is on ceremonial
If I make one exception, I have to make an exception for everybody.
Okay, that's fine. Well, I was talking with the clerk and then about, you know, getting everything together here. Well, I guess that's, I appreciate you guys listening and all. So this is about ceremonial resolutions?
Yes.
Okay.
So you were talking about peace?
Right, right. And um, yeah, peace for the birdies. And September 21 was also um, National, National Nene Day. Yeah, it was about the nenes. Okay, thank you for that. And that's about it. Thank you. Aloha kakahiaka. I'll see you guys in a couple of minutes.
Thank you. Any questions, members? If not, Ms. Clerk?
Chair, there's currently no one else signed up to testify on ceremonial resolutions, so this will be last call. The countdown is three, two, one. Chair, there is no one indicating a desire to testify.
Any members, any objections to closing public testimony and accepting written testimony on ceremonial resolutions? So ordered, Ms. Clerk?
Chair, before you use Resolution 25-181, recognizing September 2025 as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in Maui County.
Protem comma.
Thank you, Chair. I move to adopt Resolution 25-181.
Second.
Moved by Protem comma, seconded by Vice Chair Sugimura to adopt Resolution 25-181. Discussion, Protem comma.
Yes, Chair. May I ask and request that Ms. Clerk read Resolution 25-181 in its entirety?
Ms. Clerk?
Thank you, Chair. Resolution number 25-181, recognizing September 2025 as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in Maui County. Whereas each year, more than 400,000 children and adolescents worldwide are diagnosed with cancer, meaning that every three minutes, a family learns this devastating news. And whereas cancer is the most common cause of disease-related death among children and adolescents in the United States, with about 15,000 individuals under age 19 expected to be diagnosed this year. And whereas Hawaii has an average of 50 to 60 new childhood cancer diagnoses each year. And whereas treatment often lasts from 12 months to three years, with as many as 200 children in active treatment at any given time in Hawaii. And whereas families affected by childhood cancer endure overwhelming emotional and financial challenges and require comprehensive support that addresses their needs. And whereas national and local organizations respond to these needs by providing coordinated care, essential services, and compassionate outreach to children with cancer and their families throughout treatment. And whereas many organizations are dedicated to serving and enriching the lives of children and families affected by childhood cancer, including Kids Cancer Connection, Inc., American Cancer Fund for Children, Inc., American Cancer Society, Inc., Hawaii Children's Cancer Foundation, St. Jude Children's Research Hospital, and Pacific Cancer Foundation. And whereas September is recognized nationally as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month to honor those affected, uplift their family's strength and resilience, and promote awareness, support, and solidarity. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the County of Maui, one, that it recognizes September 2025 as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in Maui County; two, that it supports efforts to broaden awareness and strengthen services that assist children and families affected by childhood cancer; and three, that certified copies of this resolution be transmitted to Stephen Feierstein, Director of Kids Cancer Connection, Inc., Dr. Amy Feierstein, Clinical Services Director, Kids Cancer Connection, Inc., Roberta Jenkins, President, Hawaii Lions Foundation, the Honorable Richard T. Bisson Jr. Mayor, County of Maui, and the Honorable Josh Green, MD, Governor, State of Hawaii.
Protem comma. Can't hear you.
Thank you, Chair. Members, it is recognized worldwide that childhood cancer is one of the most devastating challenges any family can face. It threatens not only the life of a child, but also the hopes, dreams, and everyday lives of those who love them most. Behind every diagnosis is a family carrying an enormous emotional weight, navigating fear, uncertainty, and the heartbreak of watching their child endure what no other child should ever have to face. Of the over 40,000 children, 400,000 children and adolescents diagnosed with cancer each year, 50 to 60 of them are diagnosed in our islands. The struggle is not only emotional, but also financial. Families often shoulder overwhelming medical costs, travel expenses, and the loss of income as parents dedicate their time and energy to caring for their child. These burdens can feel unsurmountable, yet families press forward with faith, courage, and endurance. This is why raising awareness is so important. Awareness brings understanding, compassion, and support. It reminds families that they are not alone. It strengthens the community's commitment to stand beside them and it recognizes those organizations who work tirelessly to aid these children and families. Together, through our compassion and actions, we can support them to help ease their struggles and bring hope and encouragement during these most difficult times. Members, I ask for your support in adopting this resolution today to recognize September as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. And to make it known that we are mindful and compassionate and that we love and support our families during these times. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Members, any more question, discussion further? Yes, Member Johnson.
Thank you, Chair. I want to thank Councilmember Kama for introducing this. It's very important and I rise in full support. I had childhood cancer when I was a kid and I, it affected me, of course, but I think overall it affected my family as well. My mother was a construction worker and after I had that bout, she switched jobs and became a nurse. So this type of disease and sickness affects everyone in your family and it affected me where I didn't ever want to go to a hospital again after that one. So, but I think the important thing is, is that when we recognize it and we say that, you know, it's not, you know, it affects the whole family and we all come together and help the kids, I think that's really important for us to recognize. And I want to thank Councilmember Kama for that. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
I see eight ayes, one excused. Member Cook, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Moving on to Resolution 25-185, recognizing September 21 as Peace Day in Maui County.
Vice Chair Sugimura.
Thank you, Chair. I move to adopt Resolution 25-185.
It's been moved by Vice Chair, it's been moved by Vice Chair Sugimura, seconded by Member Uuhodgens to adopt Resolution 25-185. Discussion, Vice Chair Sugimura.
Thank you. I'd like to request the Clerk read the resolution in its entirety, please.
Ms. Clerk? Thank you, Madam Chair. Resolution 25-185, recognizing September 21 as Peace Day in Maui County. Whereas Peace Day is intended to promote peace programs, improve international relations, and increase educational awareness of peace, as stated in Section 8-16 Hawaii Revise Statutes. And whereas HRS Section 8-16 also states that everyone throughout the Hawaiian Islands is encouraged to observe and celebrate the blessings of peace and endeavor to create peace on Peace Day. And whereas the United Nations General Assembly by resolution established September 21, 1981, International Day of Peace, also known as World Peace Day. And whereas in 2006, a group of teenagers with the Hawaii Federation of Young, of Junior Young Buddhist Associations, launched a movement to establish statewide Peace Day observances aligned with the UN. And whereas through their efforts, Hawaii became the first US state to recognize Peace Day through Act 23, 2027, sorry, 2007, which established HRS Section 8-16. And whereas the annual Peace Day observances encourage, observance encourages Hawaii's residents and organizations to celebrate the blessings of peace and to advance nonviolent communication in their communities. And whereas Peace Day also offers a shared opportunity for nations to engage in meaningful acts that promote tolerance and compassion around the world. And whereas the council recognizes that ongoing international conflicts continue to harm innocent civilians, making the pursuit of global peace urgent and essential. Whereas with the Maui Buddhist community's leadership, Maui County residents have honored Peace Day every year since 2007 with gatherings and displays. And whereas this year's Peace Day Summit at the Makawal Buddhist Temple featured Hawaiian cultural practices that were supported by the Interfaith Alliance Hawaii and the Rotary Club of Upcountry Maui. And whereas Peace Day is an annual moment to remind each person to be an active participant in promoting wisdom, kindness, and nonviolent conflict resolution. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the County of Maui, one, that it recognizes September 21 as Peace Day in Maui County; and two, that certified copies of this resolution be transmitted to the Reverend Ai Hiranaka Kahului and Lahaina Honganji Missions, Reverend John Hara Kahului and Wailuku Jodo Missions, Reverend Takayuki Meguro Kula Shufukuji Chinkha Mission and Lahaina Shingo Mission, Reverend Genso Hara Lahaina Jodo Mission, Chris Richardson, President, Lanai Honganji Mission, Reverend Keri Kiohara Makawal Honganji Mission, Reverend Tomoki Herasawa Paia Mantokuri Soto Zen Mission, Reverend Issei Ikinaga Puunene Michira Mission, Reverend Kodai Haga Rinza Zen Mission, Reverend Shinkai Murakami Wailuku Honganji Mission, Reverend George Getigawa Wailuku Shingo Mission, Jay Yokoyama, President, Hawaii Federation of Young, of Junior Young Buddhist Associations, Wade Toyama Advisor, Maui United Junior Young Buddhist Association, Reverend Dr. Cynthia E. Lynch, President, the Interfaith Alliance of Hawaii, Mary Albitz, President Rotary Club of Upcountry Maui, and the Honorable Richard T. Bisson Jr. Mayor, County of Maui.
Vice Chair Sugimura?
Thank you. I would like to say a few words before we take the vote on the resolution. Peace Day has been celebrated worldwide since 1981 and in Hawaii since 2007. This year's Peace Day celebration included a Peace Day event at the Makawal Buddhist Temple on September 20th, an international peace poll ceremony held at the Kalana Omaui Building on September 21st, which was part of the Global Peace Poll livestream, livestream to connect communities worldwide in a shared call for peace. And I, and will culminate with a rally around the peace event on September 27th from 9:00 to 3:00 at the South Maui Gardens in Kihei. I, I ask for the members' support of this motion.
Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
Eight ayes, one excused. Member Cook, motion carries. Okay, um, did we have a representative from the Cancer Society here? No? Okay.
No, we did not, Chair.
Okay, thank you. So now would be the good time to ask those who are, maybe you could tell us who's here to represent the peace.
Thank you very much, Chair. So Kelly Keith, I think, there she is. She would like to speak in behalf of the resolution before us. And I would like to ask all the members, she brought her whole entourage of supporters from the different churches from Maui and as well as, I guess she mentioned Lanai, I'm not too sure if Lanai is here, but if all the sensei and everybody who's here, if you want to stand.
We have representatives here from Maui Honganji Temples, three of them, Lanai, Makawal, and Kahului. We have representatives from the Vietnamese Buddhist monastery here on Punene Avenue that have come. And they're leaders here from California today, so we're very lucky to have her. And I'd just like to say a few words thanking the council for even taking this up. As you know, peace is very important to Buddhists and it's really interesting to me to think about the fact that this was passed by teenagers and young adults. And I think, like you, Councilmember Johnson, having been a survivor of cancer as a young people, when you take something and it really stays with you, it's important and it's strong. And we as adults tend to kind of let all of life's issues get in the way. So this is a way of acknowledging those young folks and many of the young folks, most of the young folks who feel this way about peace. And like this speaker who's talking about the birds, we have to consider so many things every day and the challenges that we have to do our work. So I also wanted to point out that, to my knowledge, there are two elected bodies in this whole country that acknowledge Peace Day. One is the state of Maui and the other is now, if you pass the county of Maui. So as you said earlier, Chair, about the fire, we have a lot of work to do. So I also know that you, as decision makers, face many challenges in the complexities of your decisions. You know, have to consider time and funding and manpower and materials and coordination and fairness and inclusion and not least, the impact of your decisions on our planet, as we know. It's getting smaller and more endangered every day. So that, that's challenging. And I think one of the things that makes it easier to do those, make those difficult decisions is to make sure that peace is on the table all the time. And so by passing this resolution, we as a county are recognizing what those young folks did 18 years ago, to say that it's critically important and it deserves to be on the table, no matter what we say, do, or decide every day of our lives. So I want to thank you.
Thank you very much.
Please acknowledge all the folks who work so hard for peace.
Thank you. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to say a few words? No. Okay, that's fine. Would you all come up and take a photo with us?
For the council meeting of September 26, 2025, please reconvene. It's 10:03 a.m. Ms. Clerk, let's continue.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We're proceeding with presentation of written or oral testimony on any item on the meeting agenda. As at this time, individuals may testify on, like I said, any item on the meeting agenda. Please raise your hand in teams, and we'll go ahead in order of sign up. Lauren Akitake, she's the Executive Director of the Board of Ethics, Resolution 25-179, and Bill 129, to be followed by Kim Willenbrink.
Good morning.
Morning.
Morning, Chair, Vice Chair, council members. Good morning. My name is Lauren Akitake. I am the Executive Director, Legal Counsel, to the Board of Ethics. I'm here to speak on Resolution 25-179 and Bill 129 regarding hiring the board's investigator part-time and setting the salary of the investigator. So firstly, I'd like to thank you very much for your approval at the last council meeting of my assistant's salary and hiring our investigator as a DM 89 emergency hire. Both began working that same week, and we are now a fully-staffed team, working to fulfill the community's wish to expand the Board of Ethics capabilities. That being said, I would like to introduce my assistant, Risa Tam Ho, and our investigator, Gail Rakes. I am deeply thankful and grateful to these two women for their excellent work and their dedication to our mission at the Board of Ethics. I'm happy to report that the attorney-of-the-day service is going very well. And again, the attorney-of-the-day will always be me. In eight weeks, I provided 17 informal advisory opinions compared to just one the month before I started. These cover a wide range from conflicts of interest and recusal questions to urgent matters raised just before commission and board meetings. These calls demonstrate the need for timely ethics guidance. I also feel complaints from the community. Some are emotional, with some expressing frustration and anger. One caller actually broke down in tears. A large part of these calls involve educating on what we do, what we don't do, explaining our process and our timeline, and directing people to the right resources if our office is not the appropriate venue for them to be in. One thing is certain: this position will never be dull. We're also moving forward with a substantial rules revision, 42 changes modeled after the Hawaii State Ethics Commission, which has been refined over the last 50 years. The notice of our rules revision was published this week in the Star Advertiser. You can find the draft rules on our website at the very bottom of our website. We're holding a special meeting on October 22 for the rules revision. Looking ahead, as part of my first 100 days, I'm meeting with a range of people, including each council member and the mayor, and will be conducting a survey to gather county and community feedback. Also, we'll be updating our lobbyist rules. We're looking to extend the board's jurisdiction over former employees to six years, and we're reviewing our GIF rules and hope to include questions on the upcoming survey to gauge community views about GIFs.
Okay.
So thank you very much for your time.
Okay, good.
Thank you very much for your time. I am testifying on two, so...
Oh, okay.
All right. I could not be more optimistic about the direction that the Board of Ethics is going in, and I respectfully request that Bill 129 be passed on its first reading and that Resolution 25-179 be continued to the next council meeting to be heard along with the second reading of Bill 129. I'm happy to serve as a resource if anyone has any questions for me.
I'm so glad that you're aware that we had to do that.
Yes.
I didn't realize you hired the investigator already.
Thank you. It's made a huge difference, night and day, to being alone in the office by myself, to now having capability to move forward.
Okay. Thank you. No questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Clerk.
Chair, the next testifier is Kim Willenbrink, who'll be testifying on Resolution 25-180, to be followed by John Crewe.
Se kahewa.
Hi.
My name is Kim Willenbrink, and it's always nice to have a reason to speak before this body. Chair, members, I'm testifying on behalf of Resolution 25-180 in support. This is the change in zoning for the Lahaina United Methodist Church, and I'm here with Pastor John, and he'll be speaking also. Let's see. There's two properties, and they are adjacent, and they will be moving together. Today's agenda... Oh, yes, I would like to note that the fourth whereas in the resolution states that all buildings burned. I am happy to say that several of the structures are still standing, and so I think that will be amended. Oh, let's see here. Oh, also in the resolution, the church is getting a survey. It's by a company that's doing free surveys in Lahaina, and so we will have that map, and we will provide that as soon as we get that. We recently met with Jordan Hart. He's now working for the Office of Recovery. And just going over all the possibilities moving forward, and he suggested that we go in for a change in zoning from R2 to public quasi-public, which certainly seems appropriate. Oh, we also met with Stan Solomillo. I don't know how many of you remember him, but he's just a wealth of history in Lahaina, and it was a very heartwarming meeting with him. And as the church rebuilds, it was originally built in 1922. We'll be working with him on some of the historic architecture and whatnot, so that's pretty exciting. I wanted to thank Councilmember Uhu Hodgens for your opening remarks. I raised my children in Pa'ia Town. It's always good to be our town. And if I had to share this mass grief with anyone, it's with all of you, because it's just very special for all of us, special time, special people, and we're getting through this. And for the resolution, special thanks goes out to Councilmember Paulton, her staff, and the Office of Council Services for just stepping up and moving on this so quickly, so that we can keep moving forward in the direction that we're going. I think there might be a waiver of committee referral. I think that's also appropriate, so that we can get this before the Maui Planning Commission, and we're excited to see their comments and remarks. Mahalo again for your support and everything you're exploring to bring Lahaina back new, because we'll never have old Lahaina back, but thank you so much.
Thank you. Are there any questions, members? If not, thank you.
Same architect that built the building. So we're really looking forward to getting back to our property. As Kim shared, we didn't lose all of the buildings in the fire. The parsonage where I live, a duplex that housed two families, and also one of the preschool buildings survived. So we are looking forward to going back to those buildings soon. We're doing some work to add the plumbing and to redo the duplex so the families can move back, and then I'll move back as well, and we plan to use the parsonage as meeting space. For the last two years, we've been meeting at Lahuyo Kalani Kanapali Congregational Church in Honokouai. Kahu Eileen Trout has been very gracious to us for the last two years. We're going to build a temporary pavilion where we'll be meeting. We're also working with Ho'ola LTRG to try to bring volunteers to the community so that we can help people rebuild their homes as well, as we rebuild our church. So one of the plans we'd like to implement is a volunteer dormitory, so that volunteers from our denomination and from other denominations have a place to stay when they're in Lahaina so when they rebuild. So that's one of the reasons why we were coming. We were looking to change the zoning on our property. Right now, it's residential. We have a lot of property. We would love to be able to use our property in a way that builds the community. We've had that history in the past, working with the Maui Rescue Mission and our homeless ministry for bringing in Feed My Sheep to hand out food, and we're just looking forward to doing more of that, and also maybe provide office spaces in Lahaina for people that have served the community, possibly housing. We have 3.25 acres, so whatever we can do to help the community, we would like to do. And that's why we're asking for the rezoning today. So I thank you very much for your time and for your consideration.
Members, questions? Member Paulton.
Thank you, Chair. As was mentioned by the previous testifier, I would like to try and move this today, and if the members wouldn't mind if Pastor Crewe could be a resource when the item comes up in case they have any additional questions when we get into the nitty-gritty.
Members, any objections to designating pastor as the resource person? No objections, okay.
Thank you.
But this is primarily to pass on to the planning commission, right?
Correct, yes. Thank you.
Chair, the next testifier is Budget Director Leslie Milner, testifying on Bills 133, 134, and 135. She'll be followed by Don Loono, who's currently our last testifier.
Aloha, Chair. Aloha, council members. So first, Bill 133. This is to reallocate funding in the residency area fund to move an additional $15,000 into the aloha classic line item. This is a request from Councilmember Uhu Hodgens, so I will defer to her on additional details on that request when it comes up. Bill 134, this is for the Maui Emergency Management Agency. As I know you all recall, funding for the resiliency hubs was allocated to MEMA for this fiscal year. It was allocated under their B budget, just sort of general professional services, and as they got into the fiscal year and met with these community groups, they determined that the best way to use some of these funds was to grant them to the community groups to do this resiliency hub work. So this is just adding light items. It's not new funding. And finally, Bill 135. This is a new grant for the Department of OEV Resources from the National Trust for Historic Preservation for $10,000 for master planning for the Lahaina Royal Complex during post-wildfire recovery. These funds will primarily be used for community outreach and engagement as they move forward with this process. Thank you for consideration of floor action on these items today. Mahalo, Chair.
Thank you. Members, questions? If not, thanks.
Chair, the next testifier is Don Loono, and Ms. Loono, please let us know which item or items you'll be testifying on. Thank you.
I don't see her.
Don Loono? We can return to her. I see that Mavis Maderos.
Aloha. Aloha. This is Don. Can you hear me?
Yes. Good morning.
Okay. We have two testifiers here at the office. The first one is Anella Loono-Kaina.
Good morning.
Morning.
My name is Anella Loono-Kaina, and I am here today to speak in strong support of helmet protection. For me, this is not just about statistics or policies. It's deeply personal. Six years ago, I lost my brother in an ATV crash. He was only 14 years old, and he wasn't wearing a helmet that day, and he suffered a fatal head injury. And then instantly, our family life changed forever. We will never know the person he could have grown into, and because of one simple piece of protection was missing. Helmets are proven to save lives. Studies show that they reduce the risk of head injury by over 60%. This is about more than personal choice. When young people are injured or killed, it affects their family, their schools, their community, and places a heavy burden on healthcare system as well. No parent should have to bury their child because something as simple and accessible as a helmet. I share my brother's story because I don't want other families to endure the heartache that mine has. Strong helmet protections are not about restricting freedom. They are about... Sorry. Reserving life, protecting children, and preventing preventable suffering. I urge you to take action to strengthen helmet restrictions, to make safety the priority. Every life saved matters. My brother's life mattered, and I hope that his story can help save someone else's. Mahalo.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for the testifier? If not, thank you very much. Ms. Loono?
Mahalo. The next testifier here is Cynthia Day, testifying on 25-176.
Aloha and good morning, council members.
Morning.
Sorry, it's emotional for me too, because Drake and Loono-Kaina was my great nephew, and we did lose him at the age of... And we did lose him at the age of 14 due to an accident with an all-terrain vehicle. And I'm testifying today in honor of memory of him and for all the other children out there in our state and especially in Hana. Unfortunately, Hana doesn't have a designated place for kids to ride their motorized bikes or mopeds or whatever. So I see them a lot on the roadways in front of my house, speeding, hopping wheelies, and not wearing helmets, a majority of them. And I would really just like to urge our police department to be aware and try to enforce these helmet laws because according to what I've read, under the age of 18, you're supposed to have a secured helmet if you're riding on the roadway or if you're a passenger. A lot of times, I see kids driving by on the ATVs with two or three kids piled on the back of it, no helmets. I think we need some more public awareness and education, maybe in our school system, that talks about the law and also educating the parents as well. Because really, when it comes down to it, it's the parents' responsibility to provide the equipment for their children to ride safely on motorized vehicles and on bicycles as well. So that's my testimony, and I thank you for listening today. Mahalo.
Thank you. Are there any questions, members? If not, thank you. No questions.
Chair, currently, this day was the last person signed up to testify. So if there are any other testifiers that would like to testify on any item at the beginning of the meeting, please either make your way to the podium or you can sign up in teams by raising your hand. So Mr. Law, and then I see another testifier who will be following him.
You ready? Are you ready?
Thank you, Sister Ella.
Thank you for your time. Aloha and good morning. Councilmembers, thank you for your time. Nohelani Uuhu Hodgens, Susan Clemens, Kaino Ashimusu.
What is your name?
Oh, sorry. My name is Francisco Hoya, and I'm speaking on Bill 133.
Okay.
And in regards to the aloha cloud trash at Hukipa and will secure delivery to the landfill. The $15,000 additional, it will go directly to the media coverage. Everybody is a volunteer, including myself. We all roll up our sleeves and happy and honored to be able to do this. And we understand all the challenges that Maui is facing and compared to everything that everybody's been sharing on the meeting earlier this morning. I don't feel that we are worthy compared to all the other things that you guys have on the agendas. But still, I have to present this. So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Members, any questions? If not, thank you very much. Good luck with your project.
Chair, that was the last testifier signed up to testify at the beginning of the meeting, unless J.C. Law would like to testify.
Okay, yeah, thank you for that. Mr. Hoya, that was one of the ones I had checked off on my list because to me, I was looking at that compared to Bill 126. So I'll take that one out because I was wondering why that was an increase and 126 was a decrease. But I'll stick with 126 and speak up for the the keiki of Molokai and Lenai. And I'm pretty sure Councilmember Rollins Fernandez has given eye on that. So I just wanted to put a question mark beside that. I wonder how come. Because I had an experience last weekend. I was in the Maui mall over there, and I saw a bus that said Molokai High School. And I was like, oh, wow, that's kind of something I haven't seen before. Usually, I just see it parked at the airport. And I just wanted to say hi to whoever it was and then welcome them to the big island of Maui. And it was a strange experience because when I came back, there was a regular guy that I know that's usually alcoholic. And I don't know if he's alcoholic, but I seen him with a bottle, and he looks like he's alcoholic. But he was near the bus. And then this girl came out of Subway, said she was Ke'ani's cousin. And I said, well, it's nice to meet you. Ke'ani's the best one. But she was yelling at the guy because he was saying something to the girls on the bus. And then the teacher, the driver, she asked him, what did the guy want? And the girl said, oh, he just wanted to give us a flower. So it's kind of felt bad because the people of Molokai are known for being really friendly. And I feel like this is like the big city life over here in Maui. And yes, I really feel like the world closing in on them. So I just wanted to share that with you guys. So I'm against decreasing any money for Molokai Lenai. That's what I'm trying to say.
Questions, members? If not, thank you.
Chair, we're going to return to the Hana District Office. And Don Lono wishes to testify.
Yes, aloha. Good morning. This is Don Lono at the Hana District Office, and I'm testifying on my own time. I just would like to strongly support Resolution 25-176, urging the police department to increase enforcement and public awareness of Hawaii's helmet laws. I think that increased enforcement is really good, but I think emphasis on education. Education perhaps in our schools and within our community in any way we can facilitate would be very helpful. We see these kids riding every day without helmets. And recently, had another incident. The other incident was my grandson Dreiden that Anella and Cynthia testified about. And that was very traumatic. But there was another incident just about, I don't know, six weeks ago or so of a young man that was on an ATV and had a very serious head injury. Luckily, it did not turn out to be fatal, and he is recovering from it. But it still is preventable. So anything we can do to assist with this would be greatly appreciated. Thank you so much for listening to our testimony.
Thank you. Any questions for Don? If not, thank you.
Chair, Ms. Lono is the last person indicating they wish to testify at the beginning of the meeting. So go ahead and give last call for anyone wishing to testify at the beginning of the meeting. Chair seeing none, we'll count down, three, two, one. There's no one else indicating they wish to testify at the beginning of the meeting.
Members, any objections to closing public testimony and accepting written testimony for the beginning of the meeting?
No objections.
So ordered, Ms. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Moving on to testimony on committee reports. Currently, we have no one signed up to testify on the committee reports except J.C. Law.
Hey, thanks, you guys. Thanks for keeping me straight. Committee report CR 2554. I spoke on this one when it came through the BFED Committee. And it's more of a tough one because, you know, 1893, I think the United States actually had a legal agreement with King for the use of Pearl Harbor. But since then, there's all kinds of stuff happened since then, you know, that led up to, I'll skip over a whole bunch of years, but 1941, when Japan attacked and stuff like that. But I'm really concerned about with the way the world stuff is going. Making Hawaii, the Pearl Harbor is definitely on all the guys that... I'm not even sure. I don't want to call anybody enemies with peace and all that stuff. But you know which ones? Putin and King John Woo and all them other guys who don't like the United States. It really feels like they're just putting a big old target on Hawaii. So hopefully, if something happens in Maui, we'll be spared. But I'm just asking if there's any terrorists out there, please don't blow us up or anything because we're not your enemy. Yeah. And so I was at the meeting. Deputy Chief said John Pelletier was going in there. So he's one of our guys. So I would just suggest that we put a tether or something, somebody to go in. Maybe the ambassador can go in with him and watch him just in case of any of those. With the current United States administration, the FBI is, to me, not to be trusted. So we got to watch Chief Pelletier's back.
Questions, members? If not, thank you very much. Next testifier.
Chair, J.C. Law was the only person indicating they wish to testify in committee reports. So we'll go ahead and give last call. If anyone wishes to testify in committee reports, please raise your hand in teams or make your way to the podium. Chair seeing none, we'll count down, three, two, one. There's no one to testify in committee report.
Any objections, members, to closing public testimony and accepting written testimony on committee reports?
No objections.
So ordered, Ms. Clerk.
Chair, before you is Committee Report 25-54, recommending first reading of Bill 92 CD1 2025 to authorize the mayor to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the Federal Bureau of Investigation to participate in the Joint Terrorism Task Force Honolulu Division.
Vice Chair Sugimura.
If there are no objections, may I please request the clerk also call Committee Reports 25-55 and 25-56.
I object.
Okay, let's just take 2554.
Thank you.
You want to make a motion on that one?
Oh, okay. So if no objections, may I please request the clerk also... Oh, oh, sorry. May I please request first reading on Committee Report 25-54?
Second, somebody. Moved by...
She said request first reading.
Move to adopt the recommendations in Committee Report 25-54. Stand corrected.
Okay. Moved by Vice Chair Sugimura and seconded by Member Uuhu Hodgens to approve the recommendations in Committee Report 2554. Discussion, Vice Chair Sugimura.
Thank you. Oh, I got it. I got it. I got it. Member comma? No? Okay. So Bill 92 2025 authorizes the mayor to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with FBI as required under Section 2.20.020 of the Maui County Code. The agreement allows Maui Police Department officers to be temporarily assigned to the Honolulu Joint Terrorism Task Force. That's it.
That's it. Any more discussion? Member Rollins Fernandez.
Mahalo, Chair. I voted against the Sim Committee, which is why I asked for it to not be combined with CR 25-55 because I would vote yes on that. But I'm voting no on this. So roll call these things.
Okay, any more discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Protin Poritasha comma?
Yes.
Vice Chair Sugimura?
Yes.
Councilmember Paulton?
Excused.
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye with reservations.
Councilmember Rollins Fernandez?
No.
Councilmember Cook?
Excused.
Councilmember Uuhu Hodgens?
Aye.
Councilmember Sinancy?
Aye with reservations.
Council Chair Lee?
Aye.
Chair, there are six, six ayes, one no, two excused, two motion carries.
Next item.
Chair, before you, it's Committee Report 25-55, recommending first reading of Bill 99 CD1 2025 to amend the fiscal year 2026 budget. Appendix B: Revenues, Fees, Rates, Assessments, and Taxes. Department of Water Supply water fund by establishing a new rate entitled "Preservation Rate for Water Used Primarily for Native Hawaiian Species Habitat Preservation or Restoration."
Vice Chair Sugimura.
Thank you. I'd like to also ask the clerk to call up Committee Reports 25-56.
Any objections, members? Okay, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Committee Report 25-56 recommending the following: First reading of Bill 100 CD1 2025 to amend the fiscal year 2026 budget by one, increasing other intergovernmental estimated revenues by $750,000; Two, increasing the Department of Water Supply's appropriation for countywide upgrades and replacements in a state revolving loan fund by $750,000; Three, amending Appendix C: Capital Improvement Project, Suburban Water Supply, countywide upgrades and replacements by $750,000; And four, adjusting the totals accordingly; And two, first reading of Bill 101 2025 to amend the Ordinance 5821 2025 by authorizing the mayor to increase a state revolving fund loan for countywide upgrades and replacements by $750,000 to finance granular activated carbon filter replacements at the Napili and Honakahua well field.
Vice Chair Sugimura.
Thank you, Chair. I move to adopt the recommendations in Committee Report 25-55 and 56.
Moved by Vice Chair Sugimura, seconded by Member Uuhu Hodgens to approve the recommendations in Committee Reports 2555 and 2556. Okay?
Thank you. Bill 99 CD1 2025 sets the preservation rate for water used for native habitat preservation and restoration as authorized under Ordinance 5841. And this rate supports the environmental stewardship while maintaining consistency with our overall water rate structure with only nominal financial impacts. Committee Report 2556, which is Bill 100 CD1 2025, amends fiscal year '26 budget. And Bill 101 2025 amends Ordinance 5821 to increase state revolving funds supported by $750,000 for countywide upgrades and replacement CIP projects. The additional funds will finance granular activated carbon filter replacements at the Napili and Honakahua well field to protect water quality and maintain reliable service. I respectfully ask for the members' support of my motion.
Any more discussion? Member Rollins Fernandez.
Mahalo, Chair. We discussed the two potential organizations that would benefit from this and some of the work that they're doing. One native Hawaiian nursery has native trees such as Iliahi, Ohe Makai, Ko'au, and Ohia. And one of the other projects they're working on, they have 500 Ko'au saplings. So this water rate will help to provide, you know, financial ease for them to continue to do the good work and to increase aquifer recharge by attracting more water with native plants such as Ko'au and Ohia. Mahalo, Chair.
Are there several types of Ko'au trees? No, because there's one that looks like scrub. The one that's right by my house.
Yeah, there's different varieties.
Yeah, okay.
But when Ko'au grow by itself, like alone, then it branches out. But when it grows in like a dense native forest, then it grows straighter up because they're competing for the sunlight. And that's the Ko'au tree that was looked for for making va'ah. But so when it's alone, then you'll see it looking more branched out. But if it's together like we want it to be, then it'll grow more straight up without branching out so much.
Okay, thank you. I needed to know that because I thought the other one was like rubbish. Okay, any more discussion? All those in favor? Raise your hands, say aye. So we have eight ayes, one excused. Member Cook, motion carries. Okay, Ms. Clerk.
Chair, from the Disaster Recovery International Affairs and Planning Committee is CR 2557, recommending first reading of Bill 82 CD1 2025 to amend definition of authorized emergency vehicle under the Maui Traffic Code to include emergency vehicles used by the Maui County Emergency Management Agency.
Member Paulton?
Thank you, Chair. I move to adopt the recommendation in CR 25-57.
Moved by Member Paulton, seconded by Member Sinancy to approve the recommendation in Committee Report 2557. Discussion, Member Paulton.
Thank you, Chair. Your committee met on September 3, 2025 to discuss Bill 82, which would broaden the definition of authorized emergency vehicle to allow MEMA vehicles to use emergency sirens and flashing lights when responding to emergencies. Allowing MEMA vehicles to be included as an emergency vehicle would improve emergency response countywide, but particularly in East Maui, Molokai, and Lenai. response countywide, but particularly in East Maui, Molokai, and Lanai. Bill 82 supports MIMA's 2025-2030 Strategic Plan Objective 3.4. Enhance the coordination and efficiency of emergency and disaster response efforts among all local government agencies, ensuring a united, timely, and effective approach to managing incidents. Your committee voted 9-0 to recommend passage of Bill 82 CD1 on first reading. I respectfully ask for the members' support of my motion.
Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand, say aye. Eight ayes, one excused. Member Cook, motion carries. Ms. Clerk.
Chair from the Housing Land Use Committee is CR 2558 recommending first reading of Bill 21 CD1 2025 to exempt uses within the Park PK and P1 Public Quasi-Public Districts of Dole Park, Lanai from Chapter 19.36B Maui County Code, off-street parking and loading.
Pro Tem Kama?
Thank you, Chair. I move to adopt the recommendation in committee report 25-58.
Moved by Pro Tem Kama, seconded by Vice Chair Sugimura to approve the recommendations in committee report 2558. Discussion, Pro Tem Kama.
Thank you, Chair. On September 3, 2025, your Housing and Land Use Committee discussed Bill 21 2025 to exempt uses within the Park and P1 Public Quasi-Public Zoning Districts at Dole Park, Lanai from Chapter 19.36B Maui County Code, off-street parking and loading. Dole Park is primarily zoned Park District with a single parcel zone PI, Public Quasi-Public District. Many of the properties surrounding Dole Park are zoned BCT Country Town Business District. As allowed by Code Section 19.36.040, the Lanai County Town Business District Design Guidelines exempt Lanai BCT properties from Code Chapter 19.36B's parking requirement. This bill was initiated by the Lanai Planning Commission in response to the request for a parking reduction request for the new Lanai's Boni Alley at Dole Park from 42 stalls to 21. The Planning Commission felt that requiring the 21 stalls was unnecessary, given the walkable nature of the area and the availability of parking around the Dole Park. Thus, it was pointed this bill exempting Dole Park from parking requirements similar to the surrounding properties for the council's consideration. Your committee supported a proposed CD1 version of Bill 21 2025 that incorporated technical and non-substantive revisions. Members, I respectfully request your support of my motion. Thank you, Chair.
Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hands, say aye. Eight ayes, one excused. Member Cook, motion carries. Ms. Clerk.
Chair, before you is CR 2559 recommending first reading of Bill 78 CD1 2025 to grant a change in zoning from agricultural district to R2 residential district for 0.7099 acres at 1550 Nukuna Place, Waileku Hava'i, identified for real property tax purposes as Tax Map Key 236007010.
Pro Tem Kama?
Thank you, Chair. I move to adopt the recommendations of committee report 25-59.
Moved by Pro Tem Kama, seconded by Member Uuhodgens to approve the recommendations in committee report 25-60. Discussion, Pro Tem Kama. I mean, 59.
Thank you, Chair.
25-59.
Yes. Thank you. On September 3, 2025, your Housing and Land Use Committee also discussed Bill 78 2025 to grant a change in zoning from agricultural district to R2 residential district for 0.7099 acres at 1550 Nukuna Place, Waileku. The applicant for this change in zoning resides on the property and rents to other residents, and other residential units on the property long term. Thus, the requested change would make the property zoning consistent with the property's current use. It would also make the zoning consistent with the property's community plan designation of single family. If this requested change in zoning is granted, the applicant will be able to proceed with renovations on the property. Your committee supported the requested change in zoning without conditions, and I respectfully request the members' support of my motion. Thank you, Chair.
Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hands, say aye. Eight ayes, one excused. Member Cook, motion carries. Ms. Clerk. 2560?
Oh, yeah. Chair from the Special Committee on Real Property Tax Reform is CR 2560 recommending first reading of Bill 111 2025 to simplify the application process for the circuit breaker tax credit by allowing homeowners who are at least 78 years old to verify income by submitting an affidavit instead of Internal Revenue Service records.
Member Rollins Fernandez?
Mahalo, Chair. I move to adopt the recommendations in CR 25-60.
Moved by Member Rollins Fernandez, seconded by Member Sugimura. Member Rollins Fernandez, I want you to know I'm too young for this program.
I know, by about 20 years, yeah, Chair.
Thank you.
You want me to speak through it? And I'll note that you don't qualify yet, Chair. Bill 111 2025 simplifies the circuit breaker application for homeowners at least 78 years old, which is not Chair Lee, who have qualified for the credit for at least three of the prior six years by allowing them to submit a Department of Finance affidavit in lieu of internal revenue service transcripts. The director may still require internal revenue service documents if there is evidence of ineligibility, preserving safeguards against misuse. I respectfully ask for the members' support of my motion. Mahalo, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Any member, Vice Chair Sugimura?
Thank you. Thank you very much, Chair Lee, for taking this up. These bills, 111, 113, 114, that actually the administration was working on with BFID, and so thank you for processing this and moving it forward so we can activate and let the, let the community then benefit from the action of this committee, from the council. Thank you.
Any more discussion? If not, you have discussion?
I, I just was clarifying, you don't think there is no conflict of interest for you to vote because it doesn't apply to you, right?
Well, you know what? You know what? You can always take me to the Board of Ethics now that they have an investigator who's not being paid.
I'll call the attorney of the day.
And there's safeguards in place, Chair Lee. Don't try to apply IRS documents.
I know, I have all of you guys as witnesses. Okay, all those in favor of the motion, or are we on the second one? Oh, this, yeah, that was still discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Raise your hands, say aye.
Aye.
Nine, eight ayes, one excused. Member Cook, motion carries. Ms. Clerk.
Chair, before you is CR 2561 recommending first reading of Bill 113 2025 to: 1. Allow property owners who miss the December 31 deadline for the home or long-term rental exemption to file for a partial exemption by September 30 of the tax year, subject to a penalty; and 2. Clarify the January 1 effective date for the home exemption.
Yep. Member Rollins Fernandez?
Mahalo, Chair. I move to adopt the recommendation in CR 25-61.
Second.
Moved by Member Rollins Fernandez, seconded by Vice Chair Sugimura to approve the recommendation in CR 25-61. Discussion, Member Rollins Fernandez.
Mahalo, Chair. Bill 113 2025 would allow owners who did not file by the December 31 deadline for the long-term rental or the homeowner exemption to instead file by September 30 for half of the application exemption and the applicable classification with a 25% late filing penalty. It also adds chart to Code Section 3.48.450 to clarify the January 1 effective date for the home exemption. In committee, we did discuss other ideas relating to the timing of the purchase of new homes and the taxes associated with the classification. And the recommendation that we received from the Finance Director was to buy in December to avoid paying a higher rate for a tax classification that wouldn't be homeowner or... And so we will continue working on other ideas associated with this. So this is just the first step, not the last step. And as Member Sugimura pointed out, mahalo to the Finance Department, Ms. Director Martin and Ms. Docwell for their work on this. This is the bill two of four that we discussed in committee, and we're taking up three of the four today. Mahalo, Chair.
Thank you for that thorough explanation, and I just want to let the members know that our committee, although we passed it, we are not necessarily satisfied, you know, with this because we can't expect everybody to buy their homes, you know, by December 30. And that's not realistic. So especially those who may be wanting to buy STRs that are, you know, STRs in the upcoming year, they certainly would miss the deadline. So we're looking to take, address that, that particular problem. Okay, any more discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hands, say aye.
Aye.
So we have eight ayes, one excused. Member Cook, motion carries. Ms. Clerk.
Chair, before you is CR 2562 recommending first reading of Bill 114 2025 to clarify that vacant Hawaiian homelands are exempt from real property taxation, including the minimum tax, except that improvements on the leased property are subject to the minimum tax beginning in the lease's eighth year.
Member Rollins Fernandez?
Mahalo, Chair. I move to adopt the recommendation in CR 25-62.
Okay. Moved by Member Rollins Fernandez, seconded by Vice Chair Sugimura to approve the recommendation in committee report 2562. Discussion, Member Rollins Fernandez.
Mahalo, Chair. Bill 114 2025 aligns with Maui County Code with the Hawaiian Home Commission Act of 1920 by exempting vacant Hawaiian homelands leased under Section 207 from real property taxes. Improvements subject to a lease under Section 207 of the Hawaiian Homes Commission Act are also exempt until the eighth lease year, when they are instead be subject, will instead be subject to the minimum tax. I respectfully ask for the members' support of this motion. Mahalo, Chair.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hands, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that's eight ayes, one excused. Member Cook, motion carries. Ms. Clerk.
Chair from the Water and Infrastructure Committee is CR 2563 recommending first reading of Bill 109 CD1 2025 to update requirements for outdoor lighting fixtures to minimize light pollution and support public safety, security, crime prevention, and quality of life for Maui County's residents.
Vice Chair Sugimura?
I move to adopt the recommendations in committee report 25-63.
Moved by Vice Chair Sugimura, seconded by Member Uuhodgens to approve the recommendations in committee report 2563. Discussion, Vice Chair Sugimura.
Thank you, Chair. Your Water and Infrastructure Committee met on September 2, 2025 to discuss Bill 109. Bill 109 amends Chapter 20.35 Maui County Code on outdoor lighting. The Director of Public Works emphasized the urgency of installing lighting fixtures already purchased by the county, which are energy efficient, direct light downward, and can be dimmed remotely in coordination with Hawaiian Electric. These features will allow seasonal adjustments during the seabird fledgling season and insensitive areas. The Maui Police Department highlighted the importance of adequate lighting for crime prevention and traffic safety, and as most property crimes occur at night. Bill 109 changes, chart, chart changes will help improve nighttime visibility and safety for residents while lowering energy costs by utilizing shielded, energy-efficient, and dimmable fixtures. Your committee voted 9-1 to recommend a passage of Bill 109 CD1 on first reading, and if members have any questions, Director Molina is available on, by calling him online. I respectfully request for the members' support of my motion.
Okay. But his vote doesn't count.
Right. But his words count a lot.
Yeah. So the vote was 8-1. Okay, any more discussion? If not, roll call.
Councilmember Pro Tem Poritasha Kama?
Member Kama? Okay.
Vice Chair Sugimura?
Yes.
Councilmember Paulton?
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Rollins Fernandez?
No.
Councilmember Cook?
Excused.
Councilmember Uuhodgens?
Aye.
Councilmember Sinancy?
Aye.
And Chair Lee?
Aye.
Chair, that's seven ayes, one no, one excused. Motion carries.
Next.
Thank you, members.
Chair, moving on to resolutions. Currently, we have one person signed up to testify on resolutions, and that is Autumn Ness. And Ms. Ness, please let us know which item you'll be testifying on.
Aloha, Council. I am testifying on Resolution 25183 in support of Sarah Freestat Pagnola to the Civil Service Commission. Generally, Sarah is a person that sticks behind the scenes. So you can imagine my joy and surprise when she told me that she was up for approval for the Civil Service Commission. If you ever had the pleasure of working with her, you know that her attention to detail is unparalleled, her ability to find out information is a lot of, I will just say that a lot of our public-facing work relies heavily on Sarah's work behind the scenes. She's likely going to kill me when I read this, but this is a quote from Sarah. "Being the total nerd that I am, the possibilities surrounding the type of reform that could be possible within this particular commission excites me to no end. I would love nothing more than to jump in and analyze our county's hiring processes and create a step-by-step, implementable plan to help improve broken systems and enable the County of Maui to begin actively filling the 700 vacant positions critically impacting our community today. I can think of no better words besides her own to talk about why I would love to see her on this commission and why we would all be better for it." So, yeah, her ability to untangle massive problems and find tangible step-by-step solutions has been proven time and again. Also, I'm gonna testify on Resolution 25182 because when I signed up, when I opened the agenda to see that Sarah is up for this commission, I also saw that you and Lee is. And I just want to share with you folks, her holistic and community-centered approach that she brings to her work in a now-united way is something that I'm personally familiar with, and it has benefited us at the Lahaina Community Land Trust, has benefited partner organizations that we work with, and that, bringing that to a board or commission, any board or commission in the county would be an asset to us all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Autumn? If not, thank you very much. Next testifier?
Chair, currently there is no one signed up to testify on resolutions, so we'll go ahead and give last call, and J.C. Law is going to testify on resolutions. Please let us know which resolution you're testifying on.
I tried to do it in the beginning, Chair Lee, but I think I must set a record today for testimony. Resolution 25175. Hailu 25175. E ho'a pono ana i ka ho'ohohu ia ana o Joseph Kiparavel i la'e ka'e ho'oka'a ike olelo hava'i ma ke keena lave lave aha. I vote yes. Aye. Oh, sorry, I got some more stuff here. Resolution 25180. I was at the meeting. I forget, it was a while back when the, I think this is the same one with the Lahaina Methodist Church rezoning. And I will go, I make every effort to go to the Planning Commission. I see this as just a request to sending it to the Planning Commission. The guys that represented the church, Pastor John... The guys that represented the church, Pastor John seemed really nice, pono the guy. And but a couple, I think red flags made me suspicious. Maybe it's just because after Queen Lili Okalani died, it was like a whole change. It was almost like everything changed back then. But he said 1896 was the original formation of that church, which is really close to when they took, Americans took over illegally. And then 1922, he said the church was built, and that was right after Lili Okalani died, so that's suspicious. And when he said homeless, that was like the third strike because it's like a derogatory word, so hopefully he'll get that straight. But that word is in the, in the Bible, the Judeo-Christian Bible, so maybe he got it from that. So I, the Housing Solutions for Homelessness Committee met yesterday. And I'll just mention that because they got a new chair now called Luna Ho'olamalu Dylan Andrian. And so I'd suggest that the church guys work with them on the TIG that they had, the Temporary Investigative Group, engaging with Maui's faith-based community. Oh, and I also want to include that I'm, my, all that aside, if they don't have a bike rack and recycling at that place, then I vote no. So that's my only two hard conditions is bike rack and recycling. Okay. And same thing with Bill 136. I see the county is getting ready to do some more stuff there at 60 South Church Street. I'm looking for a recycling area on all county facilities.
Next testifier.
Chair.
Oh, I thought you were going to ask for questions of the testifier. Or do you want, have questions? Who has questions?
As long as it's not on the bill. Because we're on resols right now, right?
I'll tell the truth.
It was on his testimony. Yeah, but he did kind of move on to bills when we're on, only on resolutions. It's Reso 25-180. Okay, so you have a question. Member Paulton has a question for you.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Mr. Law. I just wanted to clarify. If you were aware, the church was founded by Reverend Soto Shiki Kihara to serve Japanese workers on the sugar and fruit plantations of Lahaina and not by the American missionaries. And that they absorbed the Filipino Methodist Church from Mala after the tsunami, also not Americans.
Thank you for that. And thank you, Yuki Le Sugimura, for bringing your Buddhists in here this morning.
Okay, any more questions?
He's not straight over into the bills, Chair Lee, but maybe that saves some time for later.
That's what I was thinking. Any more questions? If not, Ms. Clerk.
Chair, there's no one currently signed up to, no one else signed up to testify on resolutions, so we'll give last call. Please raise your hand in teams or make your way to the podium. Chair seeing none, we'll count down three, two, one. No one else to testify on resolutions.
Any objections to closing public test?
No objections.
Public testimony on, and accepting written testimony on resolutions. No objections, so ordered. Ms. Clerk.
Chair, remember, we take up Reso 25-175. I have to step away after this.
Okay, this is Member Rollins Fernandez. Could you repeat what you just asked?
Resolution 25-175, please.
Okay, Ms. Clerk. Please call it 175.
Okay, and Chair before you is Resolution 25-175 approving the appointment of Joseph Kepa Ravel as Hawaiian Language Communication Specialist in the Office of Counsel Services.
Member Rollins Fernandez.
Mahalo, Chair. I move to adopt Resolution 25-175.
Second.
Moved by Member Rollins Fernandez, seconded by Member Sinancy to adopt Resolution 25-175. Discussion, Member Rollins Fernandez.
Mahalo, Chair. Mr. Ravel, or Kepa, is a Makawal resident and a graduate, graduate of Kamehameha Schools, Maui. He earned a Bachelor's of Arts degree in Hawaiian language and Hawaiian history from the University of Hawaii at Hilo. Through his most recent employment in the County Department of Oevi Resources, he gained knowledge of county objectives and processes. And through his previous involvement creating social media content for Haleakala National Park and drafting columns for a UH Hilo magazine, Kepa gained communications experience as well. Kepa is knowledgeable and deeply cares for the preservation and perpetuation of olelo Hawaii. And his appointment would directly support the Charter Amendment requiring Maui County operate as a bilingual government. Kepa's background and experience make him well-suited for the Hawaiian Language Communication Specialist position. Building capacity with more than one Hawaiian Language Communication Specialist is also essential to meet deadlines and ensure consistent support for our council's work. I'm really excited that we're going to have two Hawaiian Language Communication Specialists. And I don't know how we lucked out so much with both Nalani and Kepa, but I'm going to count our blessings. Kepa is also quite a pleasure to work with. And he has so much excitement for this work. So I really look forward to working with him on some PAFs of my own. So I respectfully ask for the members' support of this motion and mahalo Chair for giving me the honor of doing the motion.
Oh, thank you for doing it on our behalf. Okay, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
Eight ayes, one excused. Member Cook motion carries. Thank you. Ms. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For referral to the Disaster Recovery International Affairs and Planning Committee is Resolution 25-174 recognizing the 2025 update to the County of Maui Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Members, any objections to referring this to the, what did you say, the Drip Committee?
Yes.
So ordered. Ms. Clerk.
Chair before you is Resolution 25-176 urging the Police Department to increase enforcement and public awareness of Hawaii's helmet laws.
Member Sinancy.
Mahalo, Chair. I move to adopt Resolution 25-176.
Moved by Member Sinancy, seconded by Member Uu Hodgens to adopt Resolution 25-176. Discussion, Member Sinancy.
Thank you. May I request that the clerk read the resolution into the record in its entirety, please?
Yes, Ms. Clerk.
Chair, before you is Resolution Number 25-176 urging the Police Department to increase enforcement and public awareness of Hawaii's helmet laws. Whereas, as of August 2025, Maui County reported 13 traffic fatalities for the year, a 50% increase compared to the same period in 2024. And whereas, recent news reports on serious traffic accidents in Maui County have stated that vehicle operators were not wearing mandatory helmets, including the following accidents. On March 8th, 2025, a 40-year-old male suffered fatal injuries in a motorcycle accident at Ting's Bridge in Waileku. On May 28th, 2025, a 62-year-old male lost control of his moped near a roundabout in Kihei, struck a curb, and was thrown from the moped. On June 26th, 2025, a 51-year-old male was critically injured in a head-on e-scooter crash with a car on Konekai Road. On July 6th, 2025, a 33-year-old female was killed in a crash when she was ejected from her motorcycle after colliding with a car at the intersection of Wahine Pio Avenue and Kelpoolani Parkway. And whereas, a state Hawaii Department of Health report found that motorcyclists and moped riders accounted for 24% of all traffic fatalities between 2020 and 2023, with 62% of those riders not wearing helmets at the time of the crash. And whereas, studies published in the National Institutes of Health journals found that unhelmented motorcyclists in Hawaii had more than double the odds of a fatal injury compared to helmeted riders. And whereas, technological advancements in battery power have expanded the transportation alternatives that are attractive to younger users. And whereas, the proliferation of new and varied transportation options, including e-bikes, scooters, and motorcycles, has raised growing concerns in the use of safety equipment. And whereas, various provisions in Hawaii revised statutes, including the Highway Safety Act and the Statewide Traffic Code regulate and mandate the use of helmets for operators of various modes of transportation, including the following: all-terrain vehicles, utility train vehicles, HRS Section 286-12A6; motorcycles, motor scooters, mopeds, HRS Section 286-81A; skateboards, HRS Section 291C, Act 130, 2025; electric foot scooters, HRS Section 291C-139D; bicycles, HRS Section 291C-150A; and mopeds, HRS Section 291C-195A2. And whereas, the council has deep concerns regarding the safety of the public, especially the youth, when it comes to safely using these various modes of transportation on the county's roads, streets, bicycle paths, and lane sidewalks, parks, and open spaces. And whereas, the council finds that public outreach and stricter enforcement of Hawaii laws requiring the use of protective gear such as helmets are critical to improving the safety of all county transportation modes, now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the County of Maui. One, that it urges the Police Department to increase enforcement and public awareness of Hawaii's helmet laws for various modes of transportation. Two, that certified copies of this resolution be sent to the Police Chief, the Police Commissioner, and the Prosecuting Attorney.
Member Sinancy.
Mahalo, Madam Clerk. Members, our office has seen an uptick in accidents involving Keke lately. And as you heard today from the Lono Kaina Ohana, the matter is very personal for them. And they wish no family go through what they have endured. As Keke go on their fall break next week, we want to keep them safe when using their e-bikes and non-motorized vehicles on public roads and on highways. Members, this resolution emphasizes the risks of operating non-motor vehicle modes of transportation without a helmet. In addition, it also recognized that there are existing laws requiring the use of helmets and accordingly calls for increased education and enforcement to ensure public safety. And with that, I respectfully ask for the members' full support of my motion. Thank you.
Any more discussion? Member Paulton.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to thank Members Sinancy. You know, when I always try to tell my kids to wear a helmet when they're borrowing any kind of e-modes of transportation, now I can throw in there, it's the law.
Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
I see seven ayes.
Aye.
Oh, eight ayes. Eight ayes, one excused. Member Cook. A motion carries. Thank you.
Mahalo, members.
Member Rollins Fernandez, are you at the airport?
No, I can't fly. The planes fly. I, I have a doctor's appointment.
Oh, okay.
So I'm going to try to, it's at 11:30, and I'll try to be right back.
We might be done. We might be done.
I'll continue to join on my phone.
Okay. All right, thanks. Ms. Clerk.
I wish that for all of them.
Chair, for referral to the Water and Infrastructure Committee is Resolution 25-177 authorizing the acceptance of the state of Hawaii's interest, if any, of the parcel referenced as the Aldike Koonaulu Street Remnant Lot located in Kihei, Maui, Hawaii by quitclaim deed under Section 3.44.015D Maui County Code and abandonment of same remnant lot under Section 264-1E Hawaii Revised Statutes.
Members, any objections to referring this matter to the Y Committee? So ordered. Ms. Clerk.
Chair, for a referral to the Water Authority Social Services and Parks Committee is Resolution 25-178 authorizing the execution of the Park Assessment Agreement for the Wailei Park Large Lot Subdivision under Section 18.16.320 Maui County Code.
Members, any objections to referring this matter to the Water, to the WhatsApp Committee? Okay, so ordered. Ms. Clerk.
Chair before you is Resolution 25-179 setting the annual salary for the investigator of the Board of Ethics under Section 2.56.080 Maui County Code.
Member Uu Hodgens.
Thank you, Chair. May I please request that Resolution 25-179 be laid on the clerk's desk until the next council meeting? Bill 129, 2025 should be considered for first reading before taking action on this resolution.
Members, any objections? Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so ordered. Ms. Clerk.
Chair, before you is Resolution 25-180 referring to the Maui Planning Commission a proposed bill relating to a conditional change in zoning from R2 Residential District to P1 Public Quasi-Public District, conditional zoning for 3.255 acres in Lahaina, Hawaii, tax map keys 2, 4, 5, 002, 005, and 006, Lahaina United Methodist Church.
Member Paulton.
Thank you, Chair. I move to adopt Resolution 25-180.
Second. Moved by Member Paulton, seconded by Vice Chair Sugimura to adopt Resolution 25-180. Discussion, Member Paulton.
Thank you, Chair. At the time when I went for the change in zoning for Grace Baptist Church about a year and some odd ago, I let this body know that at the Maui Council for Native Hawaiian Advancement Conference, one of the visions of then Mayor Advisory Committee member Archie Kalepo was to see all of the churches in Lahaina be rebuilt. And this is to further that vision that is held by many Lahaina residents. At that time, we tried to reach out to all the churches that were not in the SMA and Historic District because that was an easy place to start. But Grace Baptist was the only one ready at that time. And since then, Lahaina United Methodist Church has come for assistance. And, and they have also been assisting the county in its overall recovery. As it was discovered, there are two separate parcels with one meter. The idea of latte, which will be coming before us shortly, was originated in the county's discussions with this church. But Lahaina United Methodist Church is requesting a conditional change in zoning for its property consisting of two adjacent touching parcels in the burn zone located at 988 Front Street and 142 Baker Street, which are perpendicular to each other. The church building stood along Front Street for more than 100 years until, and several other structures on the church's 3.255-acre property were destroyed in the August 2023 Maui wildfires. The church has had to temporarily hold services at Lahui O Kalanika Anapali Congregational Church in Honokawai. This is a time-sensitive matter because the church's sources of recovery funding are set to expire by February 2027. The West Maui Community Plan designation for the property is already public quasi-public. Pastor John Crew and his congregation are eager to rebuild, not just for themselves, but also to help the needs of the West Maui community and are in the process of submitting temporary permits for immediate congregation and office space. And as I mentioned to one of the previous testifiers, this is a very multicultural church, started out with a heavy Japanese congregation, absorbed the Filipino congregation. Now it has a lot of Tongan members as well as others. And so at this time, I move to amend Resolution 25-180 with my proposed ASF distributed just now and move to suspend Rule 19 of the Rules of the Council to allow final action at this same meeting as an amendment. And the motion is to just strike the word "all" and insert the word "several," as you heard one of the testifiers, that not all of the buildings burned down.
Okay.
Second.
All right, moved by Member Paulton and seconded by Pro Tem Kama to amend the resolution by striking the word "all" and inserting the word "several" and to suspend Rule 19, Rules of the Council, to allow final action at the same, at this meeting as an amendment. Any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approving the amendment, raise your hand. Say aye.
Aye.
So we have.
Aye.
Oh, we have eight ayes, one excused. Member Cook.
Two excused.
Oh, two excused. Oh, Member Johnson. Member Johnson. Two excused would be Member Johnson and Member Cook. Okay.
And on the main motion is amended. This is just for referral to the Planning Commission to get it started. Hopefully, it doesn't take two years like Moko Roots. But Pastor Crew is in attendance if anyone has any additional questions.
Members, do you have any additional questions for the pastor? If not, the main motion as amended, all those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we have, so we have seven ayes, two excused, Members Cook and Johnson. Motion carries. Thank you. Good luck, pastor. Ms. Clerk.
Chair, before you is Resolution Twenty-Five-Dash-One-Eighty-Two, appointing G. Yun Lee to the Civil Service Commission.
Let's see. If there's no objection, can we also call up Reso Twenty-Five-Dash-One-Eighty-Three? No objections to calling up these two resolutions? Okay, Ms. Clerk.
Resolution Twenty-Five-One-Eighty-Three, appointing Sarah Freestat Pajimola to the Civil Service Commission.
Member Paulton.
Thank you, Chair. I'm very excited to bring these two resolutions forth. While I know that we had a plethora of seats to fill in our thirty-day opportunity, I decided to focus on, you know, where I felt the need was greatest. And, you know, I scoured the county over, and I was fortunate enough to find two brilliant souls who are hammers each in their own right. And they understand the assignment we've discussed at length. And both of them are working very hard in their other roles and capacities. So I told them, "Leave it to me, I'll carry us across the finish line." So just speaking a little bit about both of the candidates. Ms. Lee currently serves as interim CEO and Director of Impact at Maui United Way. She previously worked at Halemakua Health Services and Imua Family Services. In her application, Ms. Lee cited her background in human resources work and nonprofit sector leadership that would provide a versatile skill set to the commission. The applicant could be available to answer questions, but at this very moment, she's working with Service Rentals for Lahaina Luna Workday tomorrow, where Service Rentals donated a bunch of equipment so that the students can clean the school and cut fire breaks around the entirety of the school, and the public is welcome to assist. She got donations of breakfast and lunch and organized donations to the Lahaina Luna Athletic Programs for the student athletes doing the work. So you can tell she's a real powerhouse. Ms. Pajimola serves as the co-executive director for Maui Nui Resiliency Hui and has served as an executive assistant in the council's, county's legislative branch for various council members in the southwest and Molokai residency areas. In her application, she noted that her experience serving in legislative operations and temporary investigative groups has given her the experience and knowledge to help strengthen our county's hiring practices and retentions. I would like to thank both Ms. Pajimola and Ms. Lee for their willingness to serve and their interest in serving on this particular commission. Council action is needed by October eighth to fill this vacancy or we lose our opportunity. And I just think that, you know, they've both done deep dives, and they know the needs. And Ms. Pajimola was taking active notes on yesterday's committee meeting, and they're ready to work. I've also spoken to Laksmi Abraham that these appointments are just filling out vacancies, and that's part of the reason why it's in our court right now. And should they so desire, they can be reappointed. I respectfully ask the members' support of my motions.
Any more discussion? Yes, Member Uu Hodgens.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Member Paulton. We were together as she was making these phone calls, but I didn't know who she was talking to. And she told me, "Don't worry, just wait on our next council meeting. You're gonna be so excited." And I am, I'm very excited. So thank you, and I'm happy to support both of these nominees. I'm excited to get these committees filled. Thank you.
Any more discussion? Vice Chair Sugimura.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much, Member Paulton. Recently, I got to sit next to G. Lee and got to have a long conversation with her and understood at that moment that she was then the new executive director for Maui United Way. And I want to ask if we can add, as on the resolution, Member Paulton, to add a friendly amendment, add Maui United Way to get a certified copy, because this should go in her personnel file. And I'm sure that the Maui United Way would allow her to take time off, to serve her time on this commission and do a good job. But if Member Paulton wouldn't object.
I'm amenable.
Okay, friendly amendment, huh?
Yeah.
And as for, oh, we have Member Rollins Fernandez, who knows a little bit about one of our nominees. Member Rollins Fernandez.
Just a little bit. Can you hear me okay? It looks like my connection is not too good. Okay, and for the record, I am in my vehicle alone and pulled on the side of the road, which I'm now gonna be late for my appointment. But that's okay, because this is worth it. I want to first thank Member Paulton for, I don't know how you convince these two hamas to serve on this important commission. Whatever you did, I am grateful. Because these two know how to GSD. And that's what we need, as we discussed in my committee yesterday. And while, you know, Member Paulton talked about, you know, both their ability to problem solve and be creative in figuring out new solutions to old problems. I think that they both know how to work collaboratively with tremendous grace. You know, without blaming and which is like looking forward and like, how do we make things better from here? And that's the kind of powerful energy that we need right now. And leave it to women to bring that. And for Ms. Lee, we did work together on some Molokai projects. And I appreciate her willingness to invest time into, you know, doing this on behalf of Maui County. And then Ms. Freestat Pajimola, she just can't resist us. Nah, she just can't resist the challenge, like Ms. Ness said in testimony. She is a big, beautiful nerd, and the challenge was just too irresistible, I'm sure. So I'm really excited because DPS is under my committee. And so I feel like we're getting the band back together a little bit, and I'm so excited. And then, yeah, Ms. Ness kind of, you know, really captured a lot of Ms. Freestat, Freestat Pajimola's highlights, particularly her investigative skills and creativity. And then just, I think her humor, like yours, Chair Lee, will definitely make it more pleasurable in doing this work. So mahalo.
Oh, very good.
I will be voting aye.
Oh, very good, very good. I have nothing, hardly anything left to say. Member Paulton, did you want to add something?
Yes, sorry, second and final. We did receive a call from Ms. Yoshida indicating that they would like both their financial disclosure statements filed by today. And so of course, I called them up in the middle of the night, and they hopped to. And from what I understand, both of them have since filed their financial disclosures as well.
Okay, very good. And all I need, want to add is that I certainly agree with everything that has been said, every good thing that has been said about these two. I don't know, I don't think I've met Ms. Lee. But of course, I know Sarah Pajimola. And she is a very creative problem solver, a positive thinker. And except for her very long memos, she's a perfect person. So everybody ready to vote? Vice Chair Sugimura, all ready to vote? All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand and say aye. Okay, so we have seven ayes, two excused, Members Cook and Johnson. Congratulations and welcome aboard, ladies. Ms. Clerk.
Chair, for referral to the Government Relations Ethics and Transparency Committee is Resolution Twenty-Five-Dash-One-Eighty-Four, authorizing settlement of Christopher Salem v. County of Maui et al. Civil Two CCB Twenty-One Zero 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 Forty-eight Two.
Members, any objections to referring this matter to the Great Committee? Okay, so ordered. Are you staring at me for some reason? Or you want to send it to somebody else? Well, send it to Paulton, she takes anything. Okay, ordinances.
Chair, at this time, individuals may testify on ordinances listed on today's agenda. We currently have no one signed up. So if there is anyone that would like to sign up, this is your opportunity. This is last call. And the countdown is three, two, one. Chair, there is no one indicating a desire to testify.
Any objections to closing public testimony and accepting written testimony into the record on ordinances?
No objection.
So ordered, Ms. Clerk.
Chair, before you is Bill One Twenty-nine, Twenty Twenty-Five, a bill for an ordinance establishing that the Board of Ethics positions for investigator and administrative assistant may be filled on a part-time basis and paid on a pro rata basis.
Member Uu Hodgens.
Thank you, Chair. Move to pass Bill One Twenty-nine, Twenty Twenty-Five on first reading.
Second.
Moved by Member Uu Hodgens, seconded by Vice Chair Sugimura to pass Bill One Twenty-nine on first reading. Discussion, Member Uu Hodgens.
Thank you. Bill One Twenty-nine amends Section Two Point Five Six Point Zero Eight Zero Maui County Code to allow the Board of Ethics investigator and administrative assistant to be hired on a part-time basis calculated on a pro rata basis based on the employee's set part-time hours and the position's annual salary. At this time, I respectfully ask the members' support for my motion. We heard from the ED of the Board of Ethics today, and they're very much looking forward to getting all the things they need to do done. So thank you.
Okay, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand, say aye. Okay, now I see six ayes. Oh, seven ayes, seven ayes, two excused, Members Cook and Johnson. Motion carries. Thank you.
Chair before you, oh, sorry. Chair, before you is Bill One Thirty, Twenty Twenty-Five, a bill for an ordinance amending Chapter Six Point Zero Four Maui County Code to rename the Animal Control Board to the Dangerous Dog Adjudication and Appeals Board.
Member Paulton.
Thank you, Chair. I move to pass Bill One Thirty on first reading.
Moved by Member Paulton, seconded by Member Uu Hodgens to pass Bill One Thirty on first reading. Discussion, Member Paulton.
Thank you, Chair. So this is a part of my effort to reduce the Board of Variances and Commission, sorry, Boards and Commissions. And we discovered that we couldn't take this out because it's required by state statute, especially for dangerous dog adjudication and appeals specifically. And this effort is to kind of try to help streamline and inform future council members and applicants because, you know, oftentimes they're asked to deal with feral chickens, Axis deer, feral cats, but it's specifically for dangerous dog adjudication and appeals. I mean, I myself have even asked applicants, like, what kind of pets they've had, and they talk about their cats and just trying to, you know, save time in the future by being very clear, we're not talking about all animals control. We're just talking about dangerous dogs, adjudication, and appeals so that everyone's on the same page. And we couldn't get rid of this board because it's required by state statute. And so just, it's a clarifying thing, a bill.
Okay. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand, say aye. Six ayes, seven ayes, two excused, Members Cook and Johnson, motion carries.
Thank you, members.
Ms. Clerk.
Chair, for referral to the Disaster Recovery International Affairs and Planning Committee is Bill One Thirty-Two, Twenty Twenty-Five, a bill for an ordinance amending Ordinance Three Eight Eight Nine Twenty-Eleven relating to the change in zoning, conditional zoning for West Maui Project District Five, Pulelehua, for project situated at Mahinahina Kahana, Maui, Hawaii.
Any objections to referring this matter to the Drip Committee? No objections, so ordered, Ms. Clerk.
Chair, before you is Bill One Thirty-three, Twenty Twenty-Five, a bill for an ordinance amending the fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget Office of the Mayor Economic Development Program, decrease the appropriation for Makualpaia Haiku residency area cleanup by fifteen thousand dollars and increase the appropriations for Aloha Classic by fifteen thousand dollars.
Member Uu Hodgens.
Thank you, Chair. Move to pass Bill One Thirty-three, Twenty Twenty-Five on first reading.
Moved by Member Uu Hodgens, seconded by Vice Chair Sugimura to pass Bill One Thirty-three on first reading. Discussion, Member Uu Hodgens.
Thank you. Bill One Thirty-three amends the FY Twenty-six budget, Makualpaia Haiku Economic Development Environmental and Cultural Programs by decreasing the appropriation for Makualpaia Haiku cleanup efforts, security beautifications, maintenance, community outreach, educational events, and economic development in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars and increasing the appropriation for the Aloha Classic in amount of fifteen thousand dollars. I requested this budget amendment for the Aloha Classic, which is scheduled for October thirteenth through the twenty-fourth of twenty twenty-five. And I ask for the members' support of my motion. Thank you.
Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand and say aye. I see seven ayes, two excused, Member.
Eight, Chair.
Eight ayes. Oh, you came back. Eight ayes, one excused, Member Cook, motion carries. Thank you.
Chair, before you is Bill One Thirty-four, Twenty Twenty-Five, a bill for an ordinance amending the fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget Emergency Management Agency Emergency Management Program, decrease Category B by four hundred fifty thousand dollars and add new appropriations for Living Pono Project in the amount of two hundred fifty thousand dollars and Hana Business Council, Inc. in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars.
Vice Chair Sugimura.
Thank you. I move to pass Bill One Thirty-four, Twenty Twenty-Five on first reading.
Second.
Moved by Members Sugimura, seconded by Members Sinancy to pass Bill One Thirty-four, Twenty Twenty-Five on first reading. Discussion, Vice Chair Sugimura.
Bill One Thirty-four amends fiscal year twenty-six budget for the Emergency Management Agency Emergency Management Program. It decreases Category B operations and equipment by four hundred fifty thousand and reallocates the funds to create two new grant appropriations to support community sustainability hubs. The first is two fifty for the Living Pono Project. The second is two hundred thousand for the Hana Business Council, Inc. These adjustments direct resources, these adjustments direct resources to community organizations already leading resiliency and recovering work. I ask for the members' support of my motion. Thank you, Chair.
Any more discussion? If, Member Paulton.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Members Sugimura, for this bill. I somewhat accidentally sat in on a resiliency Hui meeting where they asked me all these questions about the money. And I pointed them that we put it for Mima this year. So I'm so grateful to know that things are starting to unlock and move with Mima and the Huis' dedication to this issue. After last year not really moving forward, they really were on it, everybody. All parties were on it this year, and I'm so glad to see this moving forward. Thank you.
Yeah, good news. Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand, say aye. Okay, I see eight ayes, eight ayes, one excused, Member Cook, motion carries. Ms. Clerk.
Chair, before you is Bill One Thirty-five, Twenty Twenty-Five, a bill for an ordinance amending the fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget, Appendix A, Part One, Department of O E V Resources, National Trust for Historic Preservation, new appropriation of ten thousand dollars.
Member Paulton.
I move to adopt Bill One Thirty-five on first reading.
Second.
It's been moved by Member Paulton, seconded by Vice Chair Sugimura to pass Bill One Thirty-five, Twenty Twenty-Five on first reading. Discussion, Member Paulton.
Bill One Thirty-five recognizes a ten thousand. Bill one thirty-five recognizes a ten thousand dollar appropriation from the National Trust Preservation Fund to support the Lahaina Royal Complex Master Plan. The Lahaina Royal Complex is one of the projects listed in Lahaina's Long Term Recovery Plan. And boy, anybody trying to give us money, I tell us, take it right away. So I respectfully ask for the members' support of my motion.
Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand, say aye. I see eight ayes, one excused, Member Cook, motion carries.
Chair for Referral to the Budget Finance and Economic Development Committee is Bill one thirty-six, twenty twenty-five, a bill for an ordinance amending the fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget, increasing estimated revenues, bond lapse bond by one point one million dollars, capital improvement projects, Department of Management, Waileku Kahului Community Plan Area, and Appendix C, Department of Management, Waileku Kahului Community Plan Area, new appropriation for sixty South Church Street building renovations of one point one million dollars.
Any objections to referring this matter to the B Fed Committee? So ordered, Ms. Clerk.
No objection.
Chair, moving on to the ordinances for second and final reading. Before you is Bill one twenty, twenty twenty-five.
Excuse me, excuse me. Member Rollins Fernandez, did you have your hand up? I heard you say no objections.
No objection, but also just for the record, I am uh, no longer in my vehicle and at the doctor office. Oh, you, oh, you can't hear me good?
We can hear you, yeah.
Okay, and it's a public place, so I don't know everybody's name.
Okay. All right, thank you for that. Ms. Clerk?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Moving on to the ordinances for second and final reading. Before you is Bill one twenty, twenty twenty-five, a bill for an ordinance to amend the State Land Use District Classification Conditionals, Conditional District Boundary Amendment from the Agricultural District to the Rural District for portion of tax map key two, one, four, zero, zero, three, zero, two, two, Hana, Maui, Hawaii, Hana Health.
Member Sanancy?
Malo Chair, I move to pass Bill one twenty, twenty, twenty-five on second and final reading.
Moved by Member Sanancy, seconded by Vice Chair Sugimura to pass Bill one twenty, twenty, twenty-five on second and final reading. Discussion, Member Sanancy.
Malo Chair, for the record, I'd like to note the receipt of the recorded unilateral agreement, which has been integrated into the bill. And for your reference, members, the recordation block for the Bureau of Conveyances is reflected on page eight of the bill. Uh, members, the council initiated the proposed district boundary amendment for a nine point five acre portion of parcel twenty-two by resolution twenty-four dash one three eight F D one on August thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. Uh, Hana Health is the only healthcare provider in Hana. Through its workforce, housing, and specialty clinic project, Hana Health seeks to improve access to healthcare services by constructing six units. Workforce housing, critical to attracting and retaining healthcare professionals, and a clinic uh, to address unmet uh, community needs. The project is time-sensitive because Hana Health has federal funding pending for this project and I respectfully ask for the members' support of my motion.
Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Okay, I see nine ayes. Uh, eight, sorry, eight ayes, one excused, Member Cook, motion carries. Ms. Clerk?
Uh, Chair, before you is Bill one twenty-three, F D one, twenty twenty-five, a bill for an ordinance amending section nineteen point six four point zero three zero Maui County Code on Restrictions and Standards for Bed and Breakfast Homes.
Member Paulton?
Thank you, Chair. I move to pass Bill one twenty-three, F D one, on second and final reading.
Moved by Member Paulton, seconded by Vice Chair Sugimura to pass Bill one twenty-three, F D one, twenty twenty-five on second and final reading. Discussion, Member Paulton.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, this issue kind of came up at the start of, like, surrounding Bill nine. But um, essentially, Bill one twenty-three would allow owner proprietors to qualify for a bed and breakfast home permit during the reconstruction or repair of their home following a disaster, even if they are not residing full-time on the property during the reconstruction period. At one time, you know, when there was such a proliferation of transient vacation rentals, we didn't want people to um, buy new homes and turn them into transient vacation rentals as a, a bed and breakfast option. So we had put on a clause that, you know, they had to live in there for like five years so they know the um, flavor of their neighborhood, they know their neighbors and things like that. Um, and then uh, a wildfire burned down the entire town and we had to rethink um, how we are coming back from that. So that was the impetus of this bill and I'm um, stoked we're here at second reading right now and I respectfully ask the members' support of my motion.
Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand, say aye. Okay, I see nine ayes, I mean, eight ayes, one excused, Member Cook, motion carries. Ms. Clerk?
Chair, before you is Bill one twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, a bill for an ordinance amending chapter twelve point four zero Maui County Code on Names of Public Facilities Designated.
Member Rollins Fernandez?
Malo Chair, I move to pass Bill one twenty-four, twenty twenty-five on second and final reading.
Moved by Member Rollins Fernandez, seconded by Member Sanancy to pass Bill one twenty-four, twenty twenty-five on second and final reading. Discussion, Member Rollins Fernandez.
Malo Chair, uh, we again had a productive discussion uh, regarding this effort. Um, and I just wanna thank the Department of O E V Resources for their um, leadership and, and, and that. Malo Chair.
Thank you. Um, are there people around you listening? Just curious.
Yes.
Oh, okay. Tell them we said hi. Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please raise.
The county of Maui Council said hi.
All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand, say aye. So, eight ayes, one excused, Member Cook, motion carries. Ms. Clerk?
Chair, before you is Bill one twenty-five, twenty twenty-five, a bill for an ordinance amending the fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget Department of Management Office of Recovery Program, updating conditional language for the Lahaina Restoration Foundation.
Vice Chair Sugimura?
Um, Chair, if there are no objections, may I please request the clerk to also call up Bill one twenty-six, twenty twenty-five?
No objections. So ordered, Ms. Clerk?
Uh, Chair, before you is Bill one twenty-six, twenty twenty-five, a bill for an ordinance amending the fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget Office of the Mayor Economic Development Program to decrease appropriation for Molokai and Lanai youth and student travel and add conditional language for a Lanai Community Association.
Vice Chair Sugimura?
Thank you, Chair. I move to pass Bill one twenty-five, twenty twenty-five and one twenty-six, twenty twenty-five on second and final reading.
Moved by Vice Chair Sugimura, seconded by uh, Member Johnson to pass Bills one twenty-five, twenty twenty-five and one twenty-six, twenty twenty-five on second and final reading. Discussion, Vice Chair Sugimura.
Thank you, Chair. No discussion.
Okay, no further discussion, anyone? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand and say aye on these two bills. So, eight ayes, one excused, Member Cook, motion carries. Unfinished business.
Thank you, Chair. And so we'll now call for any testimony on the unfinished business item. Um, Chair, uh, seeing no one making their way to the podium or raising their hand in teams, we'll count down three, two, one. There is no one wishing to testify on unfinished business.
Members, any objections to closing public testimony and accepting written testimony on unfinished business?
No objections.
So ordered, Ms. Clerk?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, from the Budget Finance and Economic Development Committee is Committee Report twenty-five dash fifty-one recommending the following: One, first reading of Bill ninety, CD one, twenty twenty-five, to authorize the mayor to execute an intergovernmental agreement between the County of Maui Department of Finance and the County of Hawaii Department of Finance to provide temporary support for commercial driver's license examination services. And two, first reading of Bill ninety-one, CD one, twenty twenty-five, to authorize the mayor to execute an intergovernmental agreement between the County of Maui Department of Finance and the City and County of Honolulu Department of Customer Services to provide temporary support for commercial driver's license examination services.
Vice Chair Sugimura?
Thank you, um, Chair. I move to adopt recommendations in Committee Report twenty-five dash fifty-one.
Moved, moved by Vice Chair Sugimura, seconded by Member Rollin- uh, Member Uu Hodgens. Discussion, Vice Chair Sugimura.
Thank you. Bill ninety and ninety-one, twenty twenty-five, authorize the mayor to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the County of Hawaii and City and County of Honolulu respectively to allow Maui Finance Department staff to temporarily as- um, assigned on a voluntary basis to conduct commercial driver's license road tests. All program costs are reimbursed either through the State Department of Transportation or directly by the receiving county, so there are no additional expenses to Ma- Maui County. I respectfully ask for the members' support for my motion. Thank you.
Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, raise your hand, say aye.
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 Okay, we're looking at eight ayes, one excused, Member Cook, motion carries. And that brings us to the end of the calendar. Members, any last parting remarks, a short kind, like if you're getting married or whatever, things like that? Uh, Vice Chair Sugimura?
Um, tomorrow on Lanai is Festivals of Aloha. I think there'll be a parade and a lot of festivities. Um, I heard from Daryl Fujiwara. I also heard that the shuttle ferry is sold out. But uh, we, I will be with him and I'm sure all of you will be with Lanai in spirit, if you're not there. Right, Gabe?
Yes.
I was gonna say that, so yeah, that's, well, come one, come all.
Sorry.
Thank you. My grandson is leaving back to the school, so I can't, I can't go to Lanai. Member Paulton?
I'll be leaving the country on Tuesday for ten days, but I'll be working tomorrow with Member Uu Hodgens and the Tiggers.
Okay, okay, but which country are you going to?
Au Tearoa, uh, I gotta chaperone my daughter's eighth grade class.
Oh, okay. Just wondered if you're going to France. Okay.
No, but I'll, I'll look into the soap in Au Tearoa and, and see if I can bring me some.
Thank you. Yeah. Yeah, the, the French uh, settled in over there too, huh? Right? Vice Chair, did you have your hand up?
Real quickly, I think I left um, miso soup, instant miso soup and a charm from Japan.
Thank you.
Returning from the US, um, Japan Sister City Summit. I think members were wondering, they're supposed to give it to the peace resolution people, but no, they're my omiage for the members, so thank you.
Okay, any, anyone else? If not, everyone, please have a safe and happy weekend. Take care. This meeting is adjourned.
Good job.